Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. It's 5:30. The town of Minnadoza resides on treaty land. We acknowledge with gratitude that Minnadoza is on the ancestral lands of the Anishna'vi Cree or Cree Dakota and the Nepe peoples and the Mayte Nation. So tonight we have two for sure, possibly three delegations. So just so you know, we try and keep the delegations to 15 minutes and then when it's over, councilors have the opportunity to ask questions for clarification and there will be no decisions made during the presentation, so we will debate that later. So anyway, we'll get started with their first resolution, which is the adoption of the agenda. Moved by councillor Landry, second by councillor Butler. They resolved that the September 3rd, 2024 agenda be hereby adopted. Any questions or comments on the agenda? All in favor? Posed, carried. The minutes, adoption of minutes. Moved by councillor Dawson.
I want to make a point of order.
Yes.
I, I, I don't know. I did not think that the CDC was carried. I see it was carried, but we don't have the answers. And also, is the RM involved? To be, going against the bylaws of the CDC? This was the question that was brought to the table. And I thought that it was tabled and we were going to get more information. We asked these files with information whether it was legal or not legal. And I may have told something, but I do not believe that it had been passed.
It was passed. It was.
Do you have someone recording that, please?
I can find the recording. The audio didn't work, but the video does. So we can show all hands go up at the end of that resolution.
That was tabled as far as I thought. But I believe it to be true. And without the audio. And we have the audio working today?
Yes, I tested it today.
So there we know. So none of these questions that were brought to the table have been answered. And we don't know if we passed something that could have been legal.
We discussed it at the meeting.
Yeah.
We didn't get the information because even at that point, Grant had also said it was merit of the brought to attention as knowing that the bylaws of the CDC were not allowed. They have to disband themselves. And then we have to apply to get the CDC. You can't just transfer that tourism. Yes, we can do that. That's not an issue. And the rest of the parks, et cetera, et cetera. But this is the corporation. It has to be dealt with accordingly.
Yes. So at the end of the meeting, councillor Butler did bring to the attention that in the bylaw, it says that it can be dissolved the proper way, which is going through the CRA. And the RM is aware of it because there is an RM representative on the CDC tourism board.
Okay, well, I thought we were taking that because again, it's still unknown.
So part of the dissolving and all the assets turn or turned over to the county.
Okay. And so do they have to redo a CDC account if we wanted to carry the CDC? Because we can't transfer that title, can you?
I don't understand the question.
We cannot transfer the title of the CDC or the bylaws of that organization.
No, because it will be restructured under Town and Borough of the.
Okay, so it's not the same one.
That's correct. That's my intent. That's the way I would perceive the proceeding would be marked much the same as when we resolve the Hall Board and the recognition.
There we disagree because the Hall Board were an entity to the town. The CDC wasn't an entity to the town. It was its own preparation.
I'm just going by what they, I shared the bylaws with Danielle. It said it can be dissolved. It was sent to Burgess and it was updated in 2022.
Well, hopefully we can do something in the.
Well, it's under the direction of a lawyer and CRA.
Yep. No, no, I just, I had thought that we had been. But it's still kind of missing.
There was discussion regardless of tabling it. And then the question came to the floor. It was carried as a question.
As the resolution.
As the resolution.
Also.
It was, there was discussion, but there was no decision.
The decision was to carry the.
If I'm sorry to interrupt the meeting, thank you very much.
So back to the resolution for the adoption of the minutes. Again, I need a mover and a seconder. So moved by councillor Mark, second by councillor Butler. Be resolved at the minute as a regular meeting of August 13th, 2024. On a special meeting, August 19th, 2024, be hereby adopted. All statutory requirements having been fulfilled. Any questions on the minutes?
Yeah, regarding 10-5, which is the setting the Brett Kissel event to a community event. It's written as if we did it and then we're doing it again as opposed to my understanding when we have a vote, what's that? It was just basically for the dollars. So I think that it sort of be identical to the on test.
I don't understand. I'm sorry. I don't understand 10-5. So it's written as CDC tourism would be holding an event on August 31st at Sunrise Credit Union featuring Brett Kissel. And whereas council for the town of Minnadoza recognized the event as a community event. Therefore, be a result that the Brett Kissel concert being held on August 31st by the CDC Tourism Committee be recognized as a town of Minnadoza community event.
Okay. But I'm thinking that the sentence that precedes the final one should be the and whereas like the gaming account of the authority of the county, not to require the council to designate the event.
Right, because.
It sounds like the final one is we just confused the line before.
Yes, that's the way the resolution was sent. So that's what the minutes were saying.
All right.
Yeah. That's how it was read out.
Any other questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor? Posed, carried. Okay, so we'll get into our delegations. The first one up is the so I'll just ask you to introduce yourselves and then the floor. Um, so a few of us are newly elected to our executive. I'm Calvin Janczewski. I'm one of the members at large. January Graham is our secretary. And Mike Crowler is just, just somebody here in support. He's here with us.
Heard your minds up.
Anyway, unfortunately Kevin couldn't be here. He would have liked to have been here, but he has minor improvements. So we couldn't be here. So we wrapped stuff up. So anyway, um, we want to thank council for the opportunity to present here this evening. Um, we as representatives of the Minnadoza Cottage Association, very much enjoy our time here in your community. While we do feel it was a strategic error not to allow prior consultation on the new proposed bylaws, even after two or three requests were initiated, we are pleased that there has been some progress made with amendments to benefit all parties involved. And yes, we thank you for that. We see for getting emails after. Has been some stuff that has been amended. And we're thankful for that. Um, there is still a few issues that, you know, we'd like to address. One of them in the proposed bylaws under Part 4 standards, parking 4.8 says parking along the side of any road within the cottage area is not permitted. Reason given was emergency vehicles. Parking is still one unresolved issue. To simply say there is no parking on the side of the road is not realistic in the traditional core area. While we support this on the two-way roads, on the three one-way roads, this is next to impossible with no solution in discussion. Our suggestion is that on those three one-way roads, Carnation, Daffodil and Peony, parking be permitted on one side of the road. This would be somewhat inconvenient and require a lot of cooperation among cabin owners, but would allow ample room for emergency vehicles to pass. I've driven it myself, those three roads. And if you look at it, it appears it's the west side of the one ways. People have almost kind of made, you know, spots to park. So that's what we're asking. If we can get parking at least on one side. We have people that have had strokes, people that have bad knees and being asked to not park on the roadway just doesn't seem right. Like there's no way they'd be able to utilize the cottages. Next item was 4.4, which is public utility. DCs are not permitted to use the town's water utility services on the cottage lock, water lawns, water down the roads as a means for dust control or any abuse of use of the utility at the discretion of the designated officer. Um, that's another issue that's been ongoing. We feel that there are additional approximately 25 recently added residential sized lots with little improvements to infrastructures to blame. And now all cabin owners are being forced into possibly much more stringent rules. We would like council to consider allowing outdoor hand watering on one's own property to allow for small beautification of the area. We are also hopeful there will be an exemption process if a cabin owner were to be spending the money to plant new seed or sod. In regards to new seed or sod, a lot of people are starting to put their own bathrooms in with approvals. Septic tanks are getting dug. Everybody knows what's there. There's a mud pile afterwards. People are wanting to plant grass or sod. They're asking possibly for an exemption. Can we just, you know, keep this thing down till the grass gets established? Or hand watering with, like we're talking hand watering with jugs.
Well, and I think just to interject, even the sod, there are the seeding that we've done this year with the road improvements. I've, I've watered them a number of times to get the grass to grow and it's been fantastic. But not only.
Right. Yeah, we're, we're, we're not, you know, we understand that, but there's issues that we're just asking for, for a little bit. 4.5, 4.6, which is again, public utility. It's talking about the availability of the seasonal water. 4.5 is it'll be available no earlier than the Friday of Victoria Day holiday. And 4.6 is where it says it'll be turned off the Monday following Labor Day. As you're aware, we'd also like to be able to extend the season where possible and our cabin owners can spend money in the community. We are asking that the water be made available the Friday before the May long weekend and in past years it has been ready. This would allow for cleanup, start of that weekend. So owners can enjoy quality family time on the long weekend. We are very appreciative this year that September cutoff date was extended to the 23rd. And we're hoping that in the, in future that, you know, weather permitting, staffing, that again, you know, the date would be extended for us. We really appreciate that. Think that was on that. Um, there's something that we would like to have added. We'd like to possibly see in here. We know parking is an issue. Um, I think the coal has been seen by members of council or town, what it's like. You know, we're parking boats in the green space. Anyway, we're asking that council add an article which states no vehicle, trailer or RV can be parked in the green space or coal area for more than 30 days. We believe this would allow easier access to maintenance and not be rear wheel parking locked. That's something we're asking for to try and, you know, grass doesn't get cut in there. Things can, they're not there for, you know, not long term anyway. We don't want to see that.
Is that where the.
Yes, yes. And I believe one of the final ones we're looking at is under the burning and fires are item 4.13 states. No liquid or solid chemical fuels, combustible fluids or chemical oil shall be permitted within the cottage area except for a reasonable quantity of fuel required for use of barbecues. From what we gather, there's been an amendment that we will be allowed to keep a small amount of gasoline for lawnmowers and stuff like that. But we'd like to see the amendment say to include lawn and garden products. If it has lawn and garden products, then we know we can, you know, chainsaws, lawn mowers, leaf rowers, hedgers, those things are covered. So it'd be allowed to keep a little fuel. The way it's written, it's saying we can't have any gas.
So we're wondering about goats.
Um, and basically those were the, uh, the things we were concerned with right now. So in closing, we ask that prior to the third and final reading, we as representative of the Minnadoza Cottage Association be able to view the amended bylaws. We all very much enjoy our time here in Minnadoza and do respect the need for bylaws for the area. We do hope you will consider our suggestions, which we believe to be very reasonable as you move into your third and final reading at your next meeting. We look forward to having an ongoing working relationship with the town of Minnadoza and its administration. And that's basically the items that we wanted to address this time. Thank you very much. Uh, councillors, any questions? Uh, councillor Dawson.
What did you like?
Pardon me?
What did you like? What are we doing right?
So far, um, you know, I should have printed all those off. I had that in my head. Um, one of them, there was the fuel. Being allowed to have a little small little bit of fuel.
Danielle.
Yeah, she responded to some.
But I think having extending the season.
Extending the season, definitely. There was another.
I think the road work that's been done this year is more than, like I've seen the ditching, like that's, that works.
And supposedly, supposedly hearing, you know, we don't know until it happens or whatever, but we've heard that there might be some commitment to cleaning up the coal area. And we agree it's, you know, if that was cleaned up, it definitely would move, you know, I want, I park my whole front. Because if I park it on the roadway, you know, it's taking up too much room and you know, it's, uh, we get the coal cleaned up. And I think and do a little bit of juggling of garbage bins. I think we can just about fit all the boats that you see in the green space of the original by up in the coal area. And I think that would make people in the front row a little happier. So you know, it's a little bit of work, but.
I think the new garbage bins have been very successful as well. We don't have any issues with the smell of the crows, bears, or so that, yeah, that's also.
Thank you.
So thank you.
No, no, thank you.
Any other questions from council? If you have a pop of coffee, some of this that you would like, please, sir. Thank you. So if there's no other questions, we do have a resolution to accept your, your presentation. So we'll do that first and then you're welcome to either stay or wherever you want. So if I can. No other questions? I have a resolution then. Moved by councillor, that's it, second by councillor Taylor. That the presentation from Robert Pettigrew and, oh, sorry. Looked at wrong resolution. That the presentation by Jan Graham, Callie HST and Kevin Newfeld, although it's Mike Crowler. With the Cottage Association be received. No other questions? All in favor? Posed, carried. Thank you very much.
And next time you're gonna bring.
It's all the way here. I needed it. I was fishing for seven hours, some hours retired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. So we'll, you're welcome to stay or leave, whatever you want. But we need you to change places.
Sure.
Is there a Robert Pettigrew, Daniel Lucet? Somebody up there that I will call the ladies up and. Okay, just introduce yourselves and then we'll let you take over and give your presentation. And then if we have questions for clarification, we'll deal with that. So I'll turn it over.
Okay, thank you. I'm Karen Lewis, Georgina Johnson and Kylie Humphries. Um, I'm a life resident, taxpayer and concerned citizen. And I'm here to address resolution 2023 dash 247 and 2024 dash 245 to advocate not just for the Minnadoza Ishi Garden, but for the very principles that make Minnadoza a vibrant, livable community. The decisions made by this council must be guided by a deep understanding of their long-term impact on our town's future, its environment and its people. In 1996, the town of Minnadoza made a decision to twin with Ishi Japan and a director from council to create a Minnadoza Ishi Committee. The shared mandate then became a youth delegation exchange. In 1999, I became a member of the Minnadoza Ishi Delegation Exchange. Jeanne Perkins and I took on the task of the Minnadoza Ishi Garden. We were responsible for all its fundraising and development. In 2007, the Minnadoza Ishi Garden officially opened. The creation of the garden acknowledges unique international partnership, enhances the library and provides a global perspective outside its walls. Additionally, it acknowledges the loss of one of the Japanese youth delegates, Yuko Miyora with memorial tree. Since its opening, this garden has become a symbol of this partnership and our community's values. A space where residents and visitors alike can find peace, beauty and a connection to nature. It is a testament to our town's commitment to fostering a healthy environment and a high quality of life. The garden's recognition with the Manitoba Tourism Award highlights its significance, not just locally, but across our province. It's telling that the Minnadoza website proudly lists the Minnadoza Ishi Garden as a key attraction. A quick search online shows that this garden is a point of interest for tourists. A place that draws people to our town. I am aware that the partnership with Ishi is no longer active. Cultural significance of the garden still exists based on the fact that the Horocultural Society hosted a Japanese delegation last summer. After many years of volunteering hours for the maintenance of the garden after its opening, we then turned over the garden in 2014 to the town of Minnadoza. A detail of this of what was needed, hours required and a budget was provided. The garden was designed as a zero skate space to address minimal maintenance. However, I know that flooding times two has required more maintenance. It is known by other organizations, most recently the Horocultural Society. It was known that members of the International Ishi Exchange, up until a few years ago, were providing some financial support to the town of Minnadoza. Although Ishi is no longer providing funds for the garden, it does not absolve the town of its responsibilities. I am here to address the resolution question on the town giving up financial maintenance support of the garden and posing the question on what is the future of this garden? Consider this, our arena, hall, golf course, curling rink, beach, heritage village, ball fields, soccer fields, Bison Park, squirrel hills, brisket farm, skateboard park, dog park, walking trails, bike walk, train park and playgrounds. These are the places that make Minnadoza not just a town, but a community. They're the result of countless hours of dedication by volunteers and organizations who believed in a shared vision for our town. Without their efforts, Minnadoza would not be the community it is today. Yet, I've heard people say, including some members of council, that people or committees start these projects and then become the town's responsibility. I challenge this view. What would our town be without these spaces? What would Minnadoza be without its green spaces where families gather, children play and visitors find a reason to stay? These are not burdens. They are assets essential to the health, well-being and attractiveness of our town. The town has a duty to maintain and protect these shared spaces. Are we now to abandon this asset? We are aware that the town of Minnadoza is providing maintenance support to the community organizations around beautification and green space enhancement. For the Minnadoza Ishi Garden, is there any other green space in Minnadoza that receives such recognition and direct promotion from the town and yet is at risk of being neglected? Why is this garden being treated differently? I ask these questions to council. The town's budget for this garden after resolution 2023 dash 247 was passed is $400. Has the town exceeded its budget? When the town agreed to take over the garden, the annual budget was $530, including $200 for irrigation flushing and cleaning. What has happened to the funds that were originally allocated for the Minnadoza Ishi Gardens upkeep? Are there bylaws or funds specifically designated for the development and maintenance of green spaces in our town? Of the current allocation for parks and recreation in Minnadoza, what percentage of these funds are allocated to the garden? Just three, four, okay. Sorry, I've got my pages mixed up. Maintenance. Every public service in the town of Minnadoza requires maintenance. What exactly is a maintenance dollars you have determined for your support of resolution 2024 dash 245? What will happen to the Minnadoza Ishi Garden if this motion passes today? How will you justify this decision to the citizens of Minnadoza and Ishi Japan? Our citizens have already expressed their support through petition. Passing a resolution without fully understanding the cost and implications is not justice irresponsible. It is a disservice to the community you serve. This community culture garden is no different from any other green space in Minnadoza. It deserves the same level of care and support. Now more than ever, the town must step up. Green spaces like the Minnadoza Ishi Garden are not just about aesthetics. They are crucial to the mental, physical and social well-being of our community. They are where we find souls, connect with nature and build a sense of belonging. I ask this council to uphold its responsibility to maintain and continue supporting the Minnadoza Ishi Garden and reconsider resolution 2024 dash 245. If direct maintenance is not feasible, then at the very least, continue financial support and allow for proper assessment and tender to sustain this vital green space. Let us not turn our backs on the values and make our town strong or ignore that countless hours and volunteers that contribute to bringing community spaces that make Minnadoza a place we are all proud to call home. Thank you.
As Pam said, I'm Georgina Johnson. I'm here as a rape pair and to discuss resolution 2024 dash 245, which reads, therefore be a result that town employees will no longer be responsible for maintenance or support to the Ishi Garden. I am uncertain as to what precipitated message posted on Facebook, but I'm glad it brought attention to your resolution. The first priority in your community strategic plan 2023 to 2027 is to improve municipal governance and communication with the rape pair. Strategy two under this priority is to explore opportunities to improve communication and transparency to increase community engagement. Your resolution has most certainly brought community involvement. After emailing each of you asking if you'd like to discuss this resolution, I spoke to three members of council. Their main concerns were around costs that would be borne by the town and what would be involved in the maintenance of the garden. In 2013, the Minnadoza Ishi Garden Committee submitted a detailed list of labor and associated expenditures to the town. A copy was mailed to each of you. A copy was mailed to each of you. Let's address the cost and/or affordability concerns first. Looking at the two thousand and thirteen breakdown of labor and costs, labor was listed as sixty-four hours a year. If you assign minimum wage to the position, the labor would be sixty-four times fifteen dollars and thirty cents, which is the minimum wage as of October first of this year. So it would be nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. Employer costs estimated at fifteen percent would mean an additional cost of a hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents. So labor total is one thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. In addition to labor, the committee assigned a five hundred and thirty dollar cost for other expenses. According to the Bank of Canada Inflation Calculator, the five hundred and thirty dollar expense in two thousand and thirteen would be six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-one cents in twenty twenty-four. So for both labor and expenses, you're looking at two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents raw on your budget. The current town Minidosa budget shows a revenue total of seven million and forty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. We are asking for point zero four one eight eight three percent of your total budget. And we paid a grant to the Horticulture Society in two thousand and twenty-three. They received a thousand dollars. So if you assign that grant to the Minidosa Ishi Garden, you're already a third of the way there. Another issue that was raised was what is maintenance? I am confident that your public works manager, Brian Jensen, knows what the meaning of maintenance is. I believe it could be left in his capable hands because you have entrusted him with this responsibility. It is also noteworthy that this concern doesn't seem to apply to any other green space. It was mentioned that the town can't be responsible for every project that volunteers create. I want to state categorically that the Minidosa Ishi Garden has always been a community project. In Mayor Duane Lepas's words in his letter of thanks dated July eleventh, two thousand and eight, to Jeanie Perkins and her committee, "We are most grateful to you and thank you for what you accomplished for us." He was the main representative of the town. This was written on account of Minidosa stationery. I also heard that council may receive complaints that the garden wasn't adequately maintained. I believe constructive criticism is necessary to keep our community moving forward. As counselors in Minidosa, complaints or criticism is a very large part of your job description. In conclusion, thank you for your time and attention. I insist that you defeat Resolution twenty twenty-four dash two four five. In my opinion, giving the care and maintenance of the Minidosa Ishi Garden to yet another custodial organization would be a dereliction of your duty. This is a town Minidosa responsibility.
Good morning, council. I am Kylie Humphries. I am here today representing the perspective of a young family in town. As a mom of two girls, green spaces in and around town are incredibly important to us. The Ishi Garden is no exception. For us, the garden is more than just a beautiful place. It offers our children a space to explore, the balance between play and quiet, and opens their eyes to different cultures and the world around them. It also teaches them about community and the importance of taking pride in our surroundings, whether they are grand or modest. Every green space, whether it features new plants or those from afar, has something valuable to teach us. They all contribute to our community and environment in meaningful ways. The Ishi Garden is unique because its sole purpose is to serve as a garden, a space designed to be appreciated for its beauty and tranquility. The connection with Japan is a remarkable feature for our little town, and a something we should be proud of. We believe that by coming together to support and maintain this garden, we are investing in our shared quality of life and ensuring that its benefits will continue to enrich our town for generations to come. Thank you.
Any councilors have questions? Yes, specifically, do you believe that council should support it in conjunction with volunteer workers?
No, I believe that is a council responsibility. I pay taxes. I pay taxes. They should be going to that. If you wanted me to answer, you're looking. Yes, I do believe it is a town responsibility.
Any other councilors have questions?
Thank you all for coming, and I must compliment Lion Landscaping. They have volunteered hours and hours of equipment and labor, and there's more. They have the list they gave. That should be done shortly, right? Thank you very much.
Any other questions for council? Okay, we have a resolution to accept your presentation, so we'll do that now. So moved by councillor Landry, seconded by councillor Marks, that the presentation from Pam Lewis, Georgina Johnson, and Kylie Humphries concerning Ishi Gardens Resolution two zero two three dash two four seven and two zero two four dash two four five be received. Any other questions before we vote? All in favor? Here, sorry, nobody was opposed. Carrie, thank you. Again, you're welcome to stick around for a bit or whatever you want to.
Thank you again.
All right, moving on, we next up would be a resolution for the wastewater treatment. So moved by councillor. Landry, seconded by councillor Doucette, whereas the wastewater treatment lagoon by septic wastewater contractors by law number two five six zero set the rates for disposal into the lagoon by contractors. And whereas the bylaw had received third and final reading on December second, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas the current utility bylaw number two five seven seven sets out the lagoon tipping fees in section eleven, therefore be resolved that the wastewater treatment lagoon by septic wastewater contractors by law number two five six zero will be hereby repealed. Questions from council? Questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed, carried? Correspondence. You have a list in front of you there. We have a resolution to accept the correspondence, so moved by councillor. Doucette, seconded by councillor Marks, that the following correspondence be received. Demolition of Ishi Gardens petition, letter from Chris Ridgeon, Traffic Calming, Second Avenue Southwest, letter from Pam Lewis, Ishi Gardens, letter from Campground Managers, Rodney and Brendan Shoemaker, Manitoba Watershed Conference, Manitoba Disaster Management Conference, Pershur Conference, Memorial Bench Request, RCMP of Current Stats, and Minidosa Collegiate Soccer Revenal Sponsorship. In favor? The soccer sponsorship? It was today. She sent a, Danielle sent a email that it was added today.
I added it to your emails. It's interesting.
It was on, it was added this morning.
I was scared being building up there.
But yeah, that one was added this morning.
We're voting a resolution. Whether or not the campground managers might be removed on account of this sort of.
Except it was sent to council, so it's correspondence in front of you that we have to share. It was sent to council. Any other questions on those? All in favor? Opposed, carried? Some of those are dealt with further on, right? We will evolve random. We are dealing with resolutions for some of them going forward, so we'll deal with them as we go. So first one under all business is the Ishi Gardens Resolution. So this resolution is to put everyone back on the table, so. These mover are seconders, so moved by councillor Doucette, seconded by councillor Marks, that Resolution number two zero two four, two zero two four dash two four five be put back on the table. Any questions or comments on that resolution? In favor? Opposed, carried? So then the resolution is put back in the table, moved by, it was moved by Mark Landry, seconded by Mark Lee. Whereas council had passed Resolution number two zero two three dash two four seven stating council directs that town staff will take over the maintenance of Ishi Garden. Whereas council in recent discussions have determined that town employees will no longer be responsible for any maintenance or support to the Ishi Gardens, therefore be resolved that town employees will no longer be responsible for maintenance or support to the Ishi Gardens. Further be resolved that the town agrees to winterize the sprinkler system and prepare same-force spring. Questions or comments on the resolution?
I would like to just be recorded, folks. And again, if size enough, I'd like this to be, and we go back to the agreement of twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Any other, oh, sorry, councillor Landry?
So from the figures that were presented before, we have an approximate, just rounding up, three thousand dollar budget for labor and possibly a little bit more for materials. Is that something that's doable within the Parks and Rec budget for this year or upcoming year? Is that going to be an issue? Still for the remainder of the year, do we anticipate a problem?
There will be no more losses.
Certainly no more losses.
As long as they do the last.
Which we were planning on. Councillor, yeah. It's just been discussed with Brian. Understanding maintenance and fully understand he does. But is this thing discussed with Brian? If he's going to be able to have manpower and equipment available, because it is important. So I mean, I don't want saying we're going to do it and all of a sudden grass and it doesn't work. That's not what I want. But so I just wanted to.
I have had discussions with him. I don't want to speak for him. He did minimum, give me minimum upkeep requirements today when I asked him for some information. It should be leading grass, tree, maintenance, fence gate, wood structure, garden ornaments as required, and the sprinkler system maintenance. It's on the resolution. He doesn't have anything broken down in time or what else would be put aside to maintain. I can get that information from him.
Exclusively as far as I was.
No.
No.
It was not.
We used to rule that all the time.
No, no, I'm telling you because who we hired from Brandon.
Yeah.
And it was two hundred dollars every year. I don't know. He always came to town and did the other town lines too.
So I don't have a problem with funding Ishi there. I do have a concern of the town staff and the requirements of that. And apparently I reached out to Chris Ewan, and he was around for a number of years. So in his email, he says, since two thousand and seven, possibly earlier, there were requests from the Ishi Committee to help the town of Minidosa perform the maintenance of the gardens. The town of Minidosa has written letters indicating that they don't have the staff resources to maintain the garden. So I'm not, again, it's just the whole staffing component, and I don't have a problem putting a line in the budget for two thousand dollars. I don't have a problem with that, yeah. I just, but if we're going to move forward with this, I think, and it was indicated in the presentation, that we as councillors should know what this exactly entails. And we haven't seen that. What does that entail? What are we going to be held responsible for? I would like to see that, and if I see it and if it's realistic, I don't have a problem supporting it. I don't want Ishi Gardens to disappear. No, we actually voted. But I don't want it to fall into disarray either, so I think we need to, we're at the end of the season. It's going to be blown out very soon. I understand there is, by Brandon's son, there is indication that there is a volunteer group that would like to take over, but I also understand that's not what the request that has come forward, which I'm okay with that also. But I think we need a little bit more information exactly what this entails, because I hear different ideas of what that entails. With Ryan able to respond to some of this, so I think this is the confusing part of it right now. If we do what exactly what was going to be taken place and what we had to do and what we were going to respond for, Brian has the time to do it and the manpower to do it, then I'm, I'm, I don't want some. I want to be able to. And I do think that that's a responsibility of council.
Brian will be attending the September twenty-third meeting for his three-month update, so I can have him have that on his agenda, and I can also get him to.
We actually, you have the low cost. Yes, yes, it was. The time, yes.
The time was on there as well.
And the hour, so it actually listed that had all been present, right? So are you suggesting that, and also, are you suggesting that be capable of this? I mean, to me, I think that none of this could have happened. Oh, this was ridiculous, but it was brought, and I don't know who brought this resolution. Was administration?
No, it was a member of council. It was councillor Mars.
Well, Robert Mars?
What?
They wanted to brought that.
We wanted a resolution stating that what the town responsibility that we have, and we've had conversations.
That we had no responsibility?
You wanted a resolution, because I said, do I need to put a resolution for every discussion the council has now? So there's something in writing.
Yes.
Because what's happening is not happening, so the discussion was that the town would not provide any more maintenance or any maintenance. And then it came back that where did this come from? So then he said, we better put a resolution on the floor. And there's the resolution.
Councillor Landry?
I just wanted to say anything about, I'd like to see from Brian's perspective.
So if I could make a suggestion. This, this all started over a year ago when, when the Hort Society just said they were done. They planned on finishing the year. Circumstances happened. They, they left, so that is why the resolution was there. But I think according to councillor Butler, Taylor, and Landry, that more information probably is needed because nobody really wants to see it go, but we also, a year and a little over a year ago, Brian also indicated that it was going to be tough for his staff to do it, and depending on the spring, that could be problematic in the spring. So I think we need to maybe take a step back and get that information from Brian and have that discussion. If that's okay with the rest of council.
I, I. I, I don't think it's okay. I think we should both make the decision and live with it.
On this?
Yes. So you defeated?
You're talking about us. Can you talk?
Volunteer delegation?
Yeah.
Procedure is. Procedures we can't. Want to engage you on the conversation.
The appearance that we, if you can. At the issue guards. Right?
Sorry?
The commitment that was a few. At a policy meeting, when we did the twenty twenty three resolution.
Yeah.
I held up my edge and I would have finished holding up until this was brought. And then that resolution. Friday before our last meeting, that, that's what set this off. So to me, we had a deal, I was honoring. Not being honored by the town. I understand the agreement and I think Brian also has a very big grip and that he should have been here tonight, so. Have you had questions and knew this was coming, he should have been here. I don't know if you want to table this until later date. Or just. Move in both and see where it goes.
Again, I don't think it's tape, it's believing to say that the council might support or not support issue garden. And I think the resolution, the way that it is, is not what our intentions are.
To change their resolution?
Well, and I would like to see as part of, who would have some indication of what the costs are, to verify what those costs, what the, what the. Plan is going forward, we have the winter, again, I'm all, I'll be honest with you, and I, you and I have this conversation. About volunteers, and I think they do it better, will do a better job of maintaining it. But that's not saying that the, the town shouldn't be, have some financial responsibility, not saying that at all.
I believe it's a two way street that it did not.
That's right, so I don't want to rush into something that is poorly worded, because I think we did that in two thousand and twenty three. Because we had a group coming and wanted it, you brought it forward, that we wanted to have this garden looking nice and the cultural society has decided to step back. So the town, let's get this up done and get the maintenance done on it. My impressions, it was a more of a short term and that hopefully another volunteer group would come forward and. Again, not saying the town wouldn't fund it, I don't think to any requests that have come by, we through grant organizations, we have. Funded. Issue gardens was seven hundred dollars, I believe, from the agriculture society in two thousand and twenty three.
That was there, yeah, we had nothing to do after the. That money went to the general.
Yeah, that's, I thought there was something. But again, I have no problem with the budget. To support issue gardens and to maintain it in some form, but I would like to have a little bit more information as to what the expectations of town are so that we can ensure those expectations.
So can we defeat this and have it re-dritten? Or you want to table, because if you table it, it's just going to come with the same word and it's negative. And that's the part that really upset me was the negativity, right? People love as example, right, we know the history, we know the result. It would be detrimental to. Our town, right, and, and also right now, we're just meeting, going to be meeting with Japanese association and with. And, and other organs. But by doing the what is brought and then surprise Mark and Robert, but by bringing this forward. It's with.
Okay, I don't have a problem, I think I would vote in favor defeating this with the caveat that everybody understands that we would like to move forward with it. What this is going to look like, what if you.
And we, we, we agree.
Yes, and it has to be a budget, and it has to be properly done and outlined, who's what responsibilities are.
So let's defeat this.
Well, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, and then another motion come forward, then that's fine.
I'm in favor of that to be in this motion.
Council mark, that's, that's. Council mark, moving forward, I think the shortcoming of the current resolution is, and it's also, it seems to be happening. With more than just issue garden, it's that we don't have a mechanism, we are ultimately responsible. Responsible, but also in support of volunteer organization that you think.
Doesn't matter if you're.
Remember this?
Yes.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that we should have a mechanism by which a volunteer organization can work. In the chief, but ultimately, if there is a shortcomings, then we are responsible. And I know the same comment would be made if it came to the candidate, so if there's some words originally wrong, and like essentially volunteers and all of a sudden the town. Okay, and I can't speak to how that happened.
Well, that's, that's.
Yes.
That's not part of this.
And had you didn't know the history, because unfortunately Jim Goff did not bring anything down. But he had said in front of Brian that we have a budget of four hundred dollars. Said by, but I need to send it to Bill Brown in ninety dollars and. Didn't know where it came from and what budget it was from. So that's where history, we have to write this down. So hopefully we can just defeat this, come back with a financial plan, how we're going to accomplish and satisfy the town and do the maintenance.
Counselor. So from administration's point of view, does defeating this motion cause us issues later on?
No, because it would be reworded. Yes, and.
So then, any other comments? You know, with the current by law that exists.
Would still.
Any other comments? And you called for a recorded vote, so I ask you to. Keep your hands up.
Yes.
So we will call the question in, do you want me to reread the resolution, we're all, yes? Okay, whereas council, moved by counselor Mark Landry, second by council Mark Lee, whereas council had passed resolution number two zero two three dash two four seven. Stating council directs the town staff will take over the maintenance of issue garden. Whereas council in recent discussions have determined that town employees would no longer be responsible for any maintenance or support to the issue gardens, therefore be resolved. That town employees will no longer be responsible for maintenance or support to the issue gardens. Further be resolved that the town agrees to winterize the sprinkler system and prepare same for spring. All in favor? Oppose? Keep your hands up. Motion defeat.
So part two will be. So thank you.
We'll be waiting.
Yes, I know you will, thank you.
Okay, moving along, we'll move into the new business, Manitoba disaster management. Resolution here, so moved by counselor. Does it second by council Taylor, whereas the Manitoba disaster management conference. Would be held in Winnipeg on October sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty twenty four. And whereas the twenty twenty four budget had allocated funds for three individuals to attend. Therefore, be resolved that the following be approved to attend MDMA C, council Tom Dossett. Questions or comments?
Is this the conference that GMOs are?
Yeah.
Then I would also like that.
Well, I was just wondering whether we wanted to, there was like stop with the council on that. No, I think.
I just don't. Well, the EMO request goes through EMO.
Well, actually, no, because we don't have it here to say, right, and that's. We're talking with Daniel.
Yes.
Because you. Yes.
Counselor.
Could I ask if their person, maybe somebody that.
No, that's.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
She has.
During the disasters, town employees are very distant and they don't have time to do that. That's why it's great.
So I'll reread the. Resolution, that's the name, so it was moved by. That's it, second by council Taylor, where the Manitoba disaster management conference. CDMC would be held in Winnipeg on October sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty twenty four. And whereas the twenty twenty four budget had allocated funds for three individuals to attend. Therefore, be resolved that the following be approved to attend MDMA C, council Tom Dossett, council Frank Taylor and Kathy Tomlinson. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? Carry. Manitoba watershed. Resolution there as well. Moved by counselor, does it second by counselor. Landry, whereas Manitoba watersheds conference would be held in Brandon from December second to fourth, twenty twenty four. Therefore, be it resolved that the following be approved to attend council Markley, council Tom Dossett. Question, your comments on that conference? All in favor? Oppose, carry. Memorial bench request, moved by counselor. Taylor, second by counselor Dossett. Whereas Darlene Brighton and family had submitted a request to install a memorial bench on the down walkway or on a nature trail within Menedos. And whereas senior administration reviewed the request and had approved of the request and are seeking council approval, therefore be resolved. The council approved the request for a memorial bench. Questions or comments on that? So where?
Their own committee except for India.
They just don't want it up at the cemetery.
So actually.
They don't want it up at the cemetery, but they're okay to damn north of the pavilion, walking trails.
Is that something they would? I'll put the spray mark.
Well, I think the line of walking.
All, Stacy.
When I talked to the family when they came in, ideally, they would like to have it on the. Down walkway would be their first choice. North of the pavilion would be their second choice somewhere. Basically. Or they would consider like somewhere heritage village trails or some such thing, they just wanted to have it someplace next and crazy. Basically, so they were open minded as to. The best location with the easiest installation. Yeah.
Even along the walkway on. Right side. Crossing the bicycle. On that bicycle path, there's space there, right side, and then further on this way.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose, carry. Option, we got a financial plan here, so moved by counselor. Butler, second by council Landry, whereas the municipal board had caused a serious delay in the approval of the town special levy by law. And whereas council had given third reading to the amended tax levy by law, removing. Of the special levy for twenty twenty four, and whereas the levy would only be removed from the financial plan for twenty twenty four due to the delay with the municipal board. Therefore, be resolved, the council adopted and approved the amended financial plan. Questions or comments on the amended?
That's hard, I'm just against the wording.
It, it shared notes, you can see it's shared notes. They do pretty more elegantly there.
Any other questions or comments on that? All in favor? Oppose? Carry. The flood mitigation resolution moved by counselor Dossett, second by counselor Butler. Whereas KJS group had been contracted to provide a flood drainage and improvement study, and whereas the initial RFP submission tool estimated project fee total. Two hundred and forty three thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, and whereas the twenty twenty three financial plan capital expenditures. Stated the flood and drainage survey and engineering to be borne from reserves from three hundred and forty thousand. And whereas the final cost total had been three hundred and forty three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen fifty, therefore be resolved. That the remaining three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen fifty balance that are not being included in the twenty three financial plan. Be born from the Canada Community Building. Canada, Canada Community Building Fund, sorry, gas tax program. Questions or comments on that? Counselor.
So the RFP was for three hundred and forty three, seven seventeen? Only one question.
It's very hopeful.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes. Yes.
They opened, yes. You have to action your items, so. Yes.
Yeah, so.
Actions can come from the gas. Yes, because I have mine from the reserve.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? Carry. Public interest disclosure, wherever, resolution moved by counselor. Landry, second by counselor Marks. Whereas administration has received correspondence regarding the public interest disclosure, just a lower protection act, PIDA. And whereas PDA, PIDA provides municipalities to choose to opt in and extend protections under PDA to their employees. And whereas PDA required a resolution from council to opt in to PDA. Therefore, be it resolved, the council approves and wishes to opt in to PDA. Questions or comments on that resolution? Counselor.
This is the no cost to us, correct, and we have to. Assign or announce. Or is that administration?
Or just the administration, it's not like.
Because they have sent their, but having an office, so.
It was the administration. If it came through, yes.
Which it will never happen.
Any other? Sorry?
Do I have? I don't see anything. Bad in this. And the products coming this out to municipalities.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose, carry. Regional Health Foundation, moved by counselor. Butler, second by council Taylor, whereas Esther Robertson had submitted her letter of resignation from the foundation. And whereas Mrs. Ms. Robertson had recommended Teresa Wareham be appointed as her replacement, therefore be resolved that Teresa Wareham be appointed to the Menedos of Regional Health Foundation. Questions or comments on that resolution? Questions or comments on that resolution? All in favor? Opposed? Carry.
You'll do it.
And the general operating recoveries, resolution moved by councillor. Dossett, second by councillor Marks. Whereas utility wages had not been transferred to the general operating fund dating back to twenty thirteen. And whereas the tax supporting document provides details as to the amounts per year. Therefore, be it resolved that five hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three twenty-eight to transfer. To the general operating fund from the utility operating fund. Questions or comments, councillor Landry?
Did we get a little background on this? And I thought that utility, this came out of utility.
The utility administration comes. Like the operator, that's all its own books, yes, but. All the recoveries for my time, Stacy's time, public works time, public works equipment. Other office staff, office equipment, all those are considered recoveries.
So this is. Such a paying for your guys' time from the utility side.
And on utility, yes, it's not actually in the.
Those three years that it's in the red. Can you explain what that would look?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
Your three years that it's in the red.
Twenty fourteen is ninety-six, three oh three ninety. Twenty twenty-one is two five zero nine zero five oh seven. And twenty twenty-two is twenty-six dollars.
And it's a twenty-six dollars.
No, right, so those are the years where they did not go.
Who calculated it?
Finance. Did all that count? It's gone back in the financial plan. So whatever's in the financial plans in the previous years.
Why do I think we had moved funds for those years?
We looked and there's enough. Nothing's been moved. And we've talked about.
Okay.
But it was actually basically moved, it was moved in the books. On the plans, but the money was never moved from bank accounts.
Okay, so that, thank you.
Yes.
Councillor Butler.
We already did.
What you're saying that it's been moved. On books, but not in the account, so. There's really more money sitting that, because to me, I think we have that much money in utilities to. Move over, but it's not showing on the books, it's just in the account, and that, that's my question.
Yes, we have.
You answered yourself.
We have plenty of funds in the utility operating.
Okay. Councillor Marks.
So, given that utilities got a basic re-op, are we going to discuss in a position? Asking for a right of the previous loss.
No.
No.
Once we are done. Writer. With our new rates that have gone to the B V.
I'm sure there's not any other outstanding consideration, uh, even coverage that were made to Oskey at the time.
That would have been brought up in the rate study, but they just didn't, there was nothing in there. Show that they had any more recoveries.
This is part of the race study?
No, this is done after, this is done by administration.
A little bit.
Yes, but if there was recoveries to collect, they would. Found that in the rate study. Yes, during that, the rates would have been different. B V.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Moving forward. Takes us into reports, I had nothing submitted, I see nothing submitted on the council reports, anybody have anything they care to? Share, councillor.
Twenty-seven, I end, see a community in Bloomsby, and. What a great bunch of volunteers sitting in that group, and we had some very positive conversations. Then on the August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth and thirtieth. I was working with John Gerard in the. Documentary, Tellmaker, with the Louis Saskatchewan Ecological Corridor. And in that was the facts that the Minnesota Archives. And convincing that the. This area would be the one to service for the archives, and also the heritage village. And these I discussed with Robert Marks earlier and Mark Waze regarding the idea. Either October, November, the federal government makes a decision where the, not the funding will be. So that's already been sent into the city boy watershed, it's working hard on that, and they're going to. Have that rule, which probably did not see in the end of the. So we're looking for that, and this will. Put Minnetonka in a good spot to be the archives and the historian. Thank you.
Hey, any questions for, anybody have anything else?
We just have to be, get our, our section out that we. It's service probably with the next. Well. What's been did? Which ever design this time.
Hey. You had something?
Yeah, I know, I had that on the fourteen. In. Assistance has resigned, started working in town elsewhere, and they've also moved. Oh, to the next door, so they're going to need a allocation. Chief Barant, they're lost to the real broadcast.
Any questions for councilman? Anybody have anything else? Okay. Speaking, there's no. CEO report or operations management report, so I guess our next item is to go in camera, so I'll have to ask. Sorry.
Just some other items.
Sorry, welcome to state.
The letter from Chris Regan, Regan?
Yes.
I think this is our second one.
Yes.
Are we?
Correspondent.
Yeah, correspondents to what Brian thoughts are, or?
No, I have discussed it with Brian, and. It's, we get concerns all the time. Yeah, thank you.
Is there a chance, because I think that's a big. It was in other places. So watch my attention that there's another on Sixth Avenue, there is issues that people tend to speed in that way. Can you maybe get a hold of the RCMP and say, can this guy maybe do some? Speed checks once in a while, I have never seen a speed check in town.
We can, I'm sure we can do that because we pay them, so they're a work price.
Yeah, absolutely, there's at least three, sorry. I'm just gonna have to counsel above on top of the speed stop sign enforcement, fantastic. New stop signs were put up not too far away from where I live, and I began, if I can count on one hand, how this camera sees people actually come to a stop at that stop sign.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say to you also about the speed part of it, because of the fact that I notice. Two cars, young kids. That are just like crazy long time, I got so many people thought we were passing lanes, so I. I think if it was.
Yes, we asked them because they were pressed.
Yes.
Councillor Marks.
Well, on Second Avenue, I know this is full sidewalk on the one side, on the south side. And I guess the other comment being, is it proximate enough at school that they get a three plus in?
Yeah, we have to look into that.
Because of the layout of the school, and because everyone from. The south side of town has got to go across that bridge. It's essentially. It, it's a thoroughfare to the school.
I disagree, I think we have to ask the question.
Zone was valid.
We can check into that.
My second part is the software rituals, sponsorship request.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, sorry. Yeah.
And I never. There's, I, I think we sponsored the AAA baseball for five hundred dollars.
Yes, we did.
And I think we should sponsor the Silver Tournament sponsor, which is five hundred dollars.
This. Yeah. Thank you.
This is, this is a very important.
Yes.
Your venture. These rap, again, please.
Yeah, they're.
Twenty teams from all over Manitoba.
Is it twenty?
Yeah. That's what it says.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, I know we get sort of this boys and girls.
So, some more background on that. They have come to council with the request to have the pavilion at no charge from October tenth to October thirteenth. Well, for one, it's booked, and for two, there'll be no water. So I've advised Tannas that it's not available. The hall is available, so she's going to be doing some talking more with the board, and that resolution is going to come back if council will be willing to. Waive the fees for three to four days.
It's a favor asked the.
So this home wasn't straight to council, this was sent out for, like, everybody.
Yeah.
Sure, so are you, you're saying then that there'll be a resolution that are next council meeting for exactly what they will be offering, or asking for, for a request?
Yes, and there's.
That's fine.
Try and see at the hall.
Okay. What's the date?
October eleventh, twelve.
Oh, yeah, it's usually the cool time.
Yeah.
So they're looking at the hall and they're looking at the concourse in the arena.
Yes.
So, they're going to decide and then come back, so I just want council to know that that reservation will come back, that's why this one wasn't on as a.
Okay, thank you, good. So that will be.
Upcoming, yes.
Once they figure out how their.
Yeah, good, thank you. Good for you.
Anything else? Thank you. And we'll.
Now you're going to, thank you, thank you for bringing that up because kids are the backbone.
Yes.
And that's.
Thank you, Jerry. Yes, thank you very much.
Without the historians, how we're gonna do.
John, don't worry.
Thank you.
So a resolution to go in camera, moved by councillor Dossett, second by councillor Marks. Be resolved that this regular meeting now adjourns to an in-camera meeting to discuss matters. In the preliminary stages as per subsection one, five, two, three, D, three. Of the municipal act, and all matters discussed in camera are confidential until discussed in an open meeting as per section eighty-three. So that leaves us with other, does anybody have anything under other?
Do we have a resolution for those?
We're gonna wait till they bring the information to us, which building they want.
But I thought we were going to move on the silver.
Well, but I think the decision was when they give us their request, it might be more money to do the hall, so maybe it'll be. Yeah. But it could be, yeah. Like, that's, that's very bad.
Yes, but I.
I thought the discussion was we would wait till. We give the information. On. Well, we first talked about the silver, but then it was agreed that when Danielle shared. As they're gonna ask for. Well, kind of figured out. We're good with that? Absolutely, okay? Any other?
Oh, yeah, I did a question, so. Oh, or is that moving forward, or is that a?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay.
I did have some comments brought back about just doing this here, so I'm looking for council's direction, if you want to do it here, if you want to go outside.
I think we should use our report. I really do, I, I, because. What happened was, it didn't really, it was nice to share deals and we'd do that for life. But suffered, people went different directions, and we're unified in that aspect, or is it just mutated?
Councillor. I, the only question. Well, well, there's dates, but the issue is that's hockey season.
Yes.
And it will be very loud in that order.
Ah.
And because the kids will be running around and it's possibly a tournament. Over for a jury again?
So then just.
And what, what do we budget, do we have budget for this to go to?
No.
Okay.
But we do have budget available from other training development that we will not use.
But I really think that the next year, one of us should be in the county federation.
I don't disagree.
Right, and I think that we could save that, use that for that time, whatever, to whatever.
Councillor.
I think if there's hockey going on at the arena, then we just have to.
Yeah, there's a. The Hall's book, the drama, and the. There's a female, a female hockey challenge.
Yeah, so show of hands, how many want to do it here, rather than go outside? How many?
I, I heard, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll just do it here.
So then we'll try and find a weekend that everybody's available, because.
Yes.
Come on, Grant. Okay. Hooray for Grant. Hooray, last, hooray for Grant.
Isn't that your goal?
Okay, we'll. We'll wait for administration to share that us.
I don't care.
The final, anything else another? Before we do the adjournment one, I don't want to rush anybody. Okay, then we have a resolution or adjournment, so moved by councillor Dossett, second by councillor Landry. Now therefore be resolved that the meeting adjourned at. Seven twenty-five PM and to meet again on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four at five thirty PM. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you.